Seeing that it is 6:30, I'd like to welcome everybody who is here and thank you all for coming. And we're going to stand for the pledge. I'd like to get this meeting going. Mrs. Perry?
Dr. McBride?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Dr. Case?
Here.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Wonderful. Entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Mrs. Perry, are there any corrections or addendums?
We do have an addendum, and that is on the consent agenda. Item 7.03 for employment to add a non-renewal for basketball head varsity girls.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendment?
Second.
Mrs. Perry?
Dr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. At this point, it looks like we're turning it over to Mr. Trussler for a Colombian presentation.
Well, good evening, members of the board. I've got our student board representatives, our seniors here, to help present the highlights and accomplishments this year. We had a great graduation yesterday. The weather worked out perfectly. The rolling graduation times, I think, were successful to make sure that we were able to have an outdoor graduation that was safe for, you know, all of our grandparents and any folks that might be immunocompromised. Very, very pleased to report to you that as of now, 210 of 217 of our seniors have all graduated. We hope to pick up at least three or four more of those students with coursework that they still owe over the summer and work that they can do, you know, at summer school. So without further ado, the highlights of our year.
We're going to start with the business department. Big things happened this year. Nine entrepreneurship students earned their Bitcoin for Everyone certification through Sailor University. The Intro to Business class had students earn over $20,000 in scholarships through regional academic challenges. And additionally, six of those Intro to Business students advanced to nationals competing in the Junior Achievement Titan Challenge. All six placed nationals with Tiff and Clemente both the second and third place. In the English department, your book is taking off again, and we'll be offered as a class next year with 25 students already signed up. The Tiffanyan newspaper went fully digital this year and released the monthly digital newspaper that was free and accessible for all students. To highlight certain teachers, Miss Conum's students read a total of 285 books on their own this school year, not including the Literature Circles or books read that are mandatory. Her fifth period class read a total of 76 books and won the book race. They'll be traded to pizza on Friday. Several teachers introduced literature circles that allowed students to have a voice and choice in their reading, creating high buy-in and high success. All Tiff and Colombian seniors successfully completed their English 12 class.
In the math department, 11 students took AP Calculus AB this year. In social studies, 95 students took an AP Social Studies class. Those include AP Government, AP Psychology, and AP US History. Two Colombian students won the essay writing competition for the Seneca County Republicans Central Committee. And in art, two students qualified for the Governor Show. These students were Anna Ruder and Mary Kidwell.
Okay, regarding the band, Colombian instrumental music students received eight superior ratings and three excellent ratings at the Ohio Musical Education Association Solo and Ensemble adjudicated event. And regarding the TC Jazz Band, they were able to perform at the TU Pro Music Festival this year, and they received positive and helpful feedback from the judging panel. That was also the last appearance of beloved Christopher Kenny as our director. And Ry Kistner, Isaac Cortez, and Ryland Clarkson were selected for the District 2 OMEA Honor Band. Ry Kistner, Ryland Clarkson, Jacob Clarkson, Dylan Reed, and Curtis Steele were selected for the Heidelberg University Honor Musical Festival. The TC Wind Ensemble qualified for state this year, earning a superior rating at District Meat and received an excellent rating at state. And overall, by the end of 2022 academic school year, all instrumental music activities were operating on normal capacities.
Regarding the TC Theater Department, Colombians revived their spring musical this year with Chicago the High School Edition. The leads included Kennedy Lackner, Amelia Nysley, Isaac Cortez, Kaitlyn Albright, Catherine Albright, Weston Runyon, and Annalee Spols, and Cole Newlove on the piano. For choir, concerts were back in the auditorium with no audience size limit, mask mandates, or ticket-only events. Concert Choir and Gold Choir participated in D-2 Ohio Music Education Association Large Group adjudicated event and received superior ratings. Fifteen vocal students participated in a variety of events at D-2 Solo and Ensemble. Out of 15 solos, 10 received Superior as the highest marking, four received Excellence, and one received a Good mark. Three students auditioned and were accepted into the D-2 Ohio Music Education Association Festival Choir, which was held in January but was unfortunately canceled due to COVID concerns.
We're now going to move on to the athletics portion, where we'll break it up into sections. Starting off with cheerleading, the cheerleaders won, as you guys know, the state competition and gave a routine non-building. Football, they finished eight and four, playing a very tough schedule, top-five schedule in the region. Brody Conley was a two-time state champion wrestling. Brett Minnick, Maddie Simcoe, Max Ray all finished as state qualifiers. And the overall team finished in the top 20 for overall GPA in the state of Ohio. In the baseball terms, they were SBC champions this year. Several first-team players, Carson Malott, Jada Myers; a couple second-team, Bryce and Brayden Rogo, and oh, Gunther Kissel. Wow. Individuals and Co-Player of the Year was Carson Malott.
Continuing with basketball, the boys' basketball team finished as district runner-ups with a 19-6 overall record. They had several All-Ohio recognition players, including Logan Beeston and Bryce Burns, all academic, All-Ohio, as well as all district and SBC honors. The team finished 12th in the state for team GPA with GPA of 3.84. For boys' tennis, we were SBC champs for the second year in a row. We swept first-team honors in the league and had the Player of the Year in Jacob Weingart. And at districts, Jacob Weingart, Brian Cecil, and Trey Shuey earned second-team district honors.
Girls' tennis, we had the SBC Player of the Year, Kelsey Weingart. And first-team doubles, Madison Wise and Mackenzie Davis. Ladies Cross Country was a four-time defending SBC champs, won several invitationals, qualified for regionals, and the ladies, all, six of the ladies earned first- or second-team All-SBC awards.
And finally, concerning the track team, several athletes moved forward from the District Meat on Saturday with the potential to break out interregionals, including my brother. And I believe that'll be held Wednesday and Saturday. And Quiz Bowl, TC Quiz Bowl won the North Division of the NCO ESC League, then placed second overall in the league at the tournament in December. Team also placed third at the OAC Regionals and were granted a spot in the OAC State Competition, where they placed 15th overall in Ohio. And throughout the year, the team played in eight day-long tournaments, including our own the Colombian Exposition 8. Next year's home tournament will be on October 1st.
Regarding academics, senior-to-be Kelsey Weingart will be recognized in some way by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation next year based on her outstanding academic work on the PSAT this fall. And teachers began using Wikla and Flipgrid to create current data to enhance student learning.
Within the counseling department, there is a successful implementation of the Signs of Suicide program in health classes this year. We'll have at least a 96.7 graduation rate in spite of all the challenges from the last several years. There was a hosting of 20-plus college-military reps at Tiff and Colombian High School. There was a record number of students applying to Sentinel, 273 total applicants, and they were, there were 23 seniors who earned a cumulative GPA of 4.0 or higher. In the special education-transistance services sector, 25 students are now receiving, now receiving opportunities for Ohioans with disabilities employment services. And additionally, 15 students received school and agency collaborated support for pre-employment and/or driver's education training.
And finally, Student Council donated $61 to the St. Paul's UMC Sharing Kitchen. They also donated $107, $107 to the Seneca County Humane Society. In addition to this, they successfully hosted a homecoming dance outside to stay COVID-safe for 605 students, and they also hosted a junior and senior prom for 394 students at Meadowbrook Ballroom.
And finally, in breaking news, Friday, we learned that there was a scoring error that was in Tiff and Colombians' favor at the Junior Achievement National Titan Competition. We had our team finish second, and then, due to the scoring error, we found out that our team actually took third. So two of Mrs. Geiger's business teams took second and third nationally. The only high school that we lost to was Yarmouth High School out on Cape Cod, beating a number of other stellar high schools. So very proud of our students. As you can see, we've had broad and diverse success this year. There is something for everyone at Tiff and Colombian High School. I'm happy and proud to report to the Board of Education that we have moved out of the pandemic. The well is primed, and there is going to be continued success for years to come. Our kids rise to the occasion. Firm believer, when kids have high expectations, not only will they achieve, but they overachieve. And we see that out of our students across our student body. Moreover, we have a fantastic faculty that, without a doubt, is one of the most caring and student-centered faculties that I've had the pleasure of working with. So very, very proud of all that's happened at Colombian High School. Sure, there's been some bumps here and there over the course of the year, but I think when you look at the broad work that our kids and our faculty have done, you should, you should be proud of what you have at Colombian High School. Furthermore, last point of the night, and this is some incoming data that we're going to look at a little further, 55% of our students achieved one-year's growth or greater on the Pro Core Assessments, and that is going to put us in great territory coming out of this pandemic, quickly closing the gap, the achievement gap, as well as closing learning gaps and getting our kids back on track moving forward to be successful tornadoes for years to come. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you so much, Mr. Trussler, and to each of your student reps who have just done a phenomenal job all year. And, Mr. Trussler, thank you for all of your service to the district and to the high school as well. He's already up there. He's going to turn it over to Mr. Bose.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. It is indeed my pleasure to recognize the Third Quarter Crystal Apple Award winner for our certified staff, Mrs. Jane Dietrich. Would you please come forward? Mrs. Dietrich was nominated by Mary Jo Raider and Debbie Hamilton, both working in our ED unit at Noble. Jane currently teaches fourth grade at Noble 4-5 Elementary. She has been a teacher for Tiffin City Schools for the past 31 years. Jane holds a Bachelor of Science degree from THE Ohio State University and a Master's of Arts in Education from Heidelberg University. In the area of teaching excellence, this is what Mary Jo and Debbie had to say about Jane. Jane has amazing discipline and classroom control as students maintain attention throughout instruction time and are undeterred by interruptions. Her lessons are well thought-out, challenging as well as fun. She has high expectations, and students strive to meet these dailies, daily. Since her lessons are engaging and fun, the students participate readily. In the area of commitment, this is what they said about Mrs. Dietrich. Jane is committed to the education of all students. She expects all students to learn facts, vocabulary, and spelling words through repeated practice. Jane is committed to working with other teachers and paraprofessionals to help her students achieve what seemed impossible at the beginning of the lesson. One example would be a student from the ED classroom made huge strides in Jane's class. This happened because once Jane saw the student's potential, she committed to helping the student even more. This gesture was remarkable and life-altering for this particular student. In the area of leadership, Jane demonstrates excellence in the day-to-day teaching and activities that make her leadership look easy. She was elected to assist with ED students because of these skills that she possesses. She is an example of professionalism as she speaks positively of her colleagues, administrators, and all of her students. In the area of student-centered, Jane encourages students in a positive manner. She listens to students' thoughts and ideas and challenges them to think outside the box to create deeper learning. All students are treated with the same respect and understanding. And in the area of accomplishments and awards, they said Jane should have a long list of awards, but she's way too modest for that. Her accomplishments, though, would include every student that has been through her class because of the success that they have shown. So Jane, thank you for all you do. Congratulations on receiving this award. We're proud of you and so very fortunate to have you in the TCS family. Thank you, Jane. Congratulations.
I'm humbled and I'm honored. Thank you very much.
If it's all right, Dr. McBride, I'll move right into retirement recognitions. All right, our first retirement honoree is Mrs. Tammy Aldrich. Mrs. Aldrich, please come forward. Tammy Aldrich has spent 25 years in the field of education, the last five at Tiffin Middle School as a paraprofessional. Her interest in education began with her mom, who was an elementary teacher for 33 years. Mrs. Aldrich's passion for autism began when her son Tyler, living with autism, was born. That passion led her into the classroom, her happy place, where it fueled her to support those with challenges to make a difference in their lives, both socially and academically. In the course of that work, she soon discovered the students were really her teacher rather than her teaching them. Thinking she had spent her time trying to challenge children, she realized it was she who was really changed. Her plans for retirement are to spend time with, with family, which includes her husband of 35 years, Al, and sons Jake and his wife Madison, and Tyler. She has one grandson, Rip, and a granddaughter on the way. In addition to spending time with the family, she'll travel, be a grandma, and work on home projects. Tammy's retirement isn't a goodbye, but rather a "see you later" as she plans to return as a sub here in the near future. Tammy, thank you for all you do. We appreciate all of your service. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, everyone. What I whispered to Bob is now I don't have to ask anyone to go on a cruise. I can just go. Thank you.
Our next individual we want to honor is Sheila Comer. Sheila, please come forward. Sheila Comer worked in Tiffin City Schools Food Service Department for 22 years. She worked both breakfast and lunch at Noble Elementary. Sheila took her job very seriously and was known as a very dependable employee, a real team player. One thing she enjoyed the most about her job was getting to know the students and seeing them grow over their time at Noble. She made the students her first priority as she treated each one with respect, a smile, and a comforting or encouraging word. Sheila was well-liked by all of her coworkers. Exhibiting a good work ethic, she practiced the philosophy of doing the job once and doing it properly. In summary, Sheila Comer is a remarkable person and an outstanding employee for Tiffin City Schools. Thank you, Sheila, for all you do. Congratulations and good luck with your retirement.
I just wanted to say thank you for letting me take care of those kids all those years, and I do miss it, but thank you.
Next, I'm going to have Mr. Trussler come back up to the mic.
Good evening again. I am pleased, proud, and honored to congratulate Mr. Tom Cahill, Tiffin City Schools Intervention Specialist who is retiring after 10 years of service to the district at Colombian High School with a total of 17 years in education, following a successful 21-year career as an agriculture commodities trader and merchandising manager. Mr. Cahill taught individualized math, Math Lab, and inclusion math classes throughout his time at TC. Tom's co-teacher, Don Fersler, says, "Tom has been awesome to work with, and he has added a lot in our co-taught classes. I will truly miss him as a coworker and friend." I echo that sentiment. Tom also served as our detention monitor for the past five years, and the thing that strikes me about Tom is not only would he just deal with detentions, but he would work with the kids on math in detention and help them get better. Tom and I had a handshake agreement for the last four years. Anytime I was working with a kid that needed math help, I'd get him up to Tom after school and let him know, "You're not in detention, but you can go up and work with Mr. Cahill to get better and get help with math." Mr. Cahill is one of our most student-centered teachers, and he has a passion for helping students succeed and achieve. Tom gets the most out of his kids because he builds strong relationships with them, and his students know he truly cares about them as a people as well as their success. My favorite personal anecdote about Tom is, in addition to how student-centered he is, it's his personalized license plate that says, "I am TC." That's true in multiple facets. He is TC, Tom Cahill, but moreover, he embodies the characteristics that I am most proud of our staff at Colombian. He's student-centered. He is caring. He's dedicated to students, and he truly embodies what our staff is all about at TC. He demonstrates those qualities and values daily in his work with students, and we are really going to miss Tom in the future. Tom, congratulations on a fine career.
Thank you, Mr. Trussler. Thank you, Board of Education. Thank you to my colleagues. I've always said, when I've moved on to a different position, that I'm not going to miss the work, but I'll miss the people. And that's never more true than right here tonight, too. Thank you.
Mr. Conger?
Thank you, Mr. Bose, Board of Education. I'm here tonight to recognize Candy Mastama. Candy, you want to come forward? Is retiring? Candy has worked for Tiffin City Schools for nine years, both in the Transportation Department and the Food Service Department. Candy's joy is working with kids, and her commitment to this is shown through her dedication to both departments. As a bus aide, Candy always arrives at work with a smile, says hello to everyone in the office before heading out to the bus for duty. She is highly praised in food service for her precision and pride in a job well done correctly. Candy never has an unkind word for anyone. No one is a quiet person until you get to know her. She can also catch you off guard saying the funniest things. While observing the kids running out to catch the afternoon bus, you'd sometimes hear Candy say, "It looks like it's going to be a fun ride today." At the end of a day, you'd sometimes hear Candy say, "Well, I got an education in the lunchroom today." She's been known to demonstrate her cheerleading and dance skills also for her food service colleagues and has an infectious laugh and quick wit. While on the bus route, Candy was responsible for making sure our students were safe, accounted for, and following bus rules at all times. She was not afraid to remind students when they were out of line, but most of the time, she was helping students by either gladly answering their questions, playing peacemaker, or mediator, consoling the dishearted, or helping a student gather their belongings before they disembarked the bus to go home. You could always count on her saying "good night" or "have a good night" to all of her coworkers as she walked out the door. Candy has been an absolute joy to have working in food service and transportation. She will be missed dearly.
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity of being able to work at Tiffin City Schools.
I also want to recognize Norbert Schurger, Nub, retiring from the Transportation Department, I believe after 12 years. He couldn't be here tonight, but we do appreciate all of his years of service. Thank you.
Mr. Beeston?
Thank you, Mr. Bose, Board of Education. I have two retirements to present this evening. First, we'll call up Connie English. Connie is a proud Tiffin Colombian graduate who has worked in the Tiffin City School District for 21 years as a speech and language pathologist. Before coming to Tiffin City, she worked in private rehab until taking a position at the NCO ESC, where she was placed in Betsville and New Riggles Schools. Throughout her time with Tiffin City, she has worked at Kraut, West Junior High, East Junior High, the current Tiffin Middle School, and Colombian High School. Despite working in all of these buildings, Kraut Elementary has always been considered her home school. Some of Connie's fondest memories at Kraut Elementary include the incredible love and support from her coworkers after her husband Chris's death, the many staff celebrations and over-the-top potlucks that have been hosted, the Walk of Fame maze with fully decked-out cutouts of staff outside for the ice cream social, the whole-school annual sing-alongs before Christmas break, and having her own kids attend the building that she worked in. She also mentioned she will never forget Don Swartz wearing her, her pink v-neck sweater for our breast cancer pink days when he forgot his pink shirt, Garland Fitch wearing a grass skirt and coconut bra for Hawaiian days, and all the times that Chris would tap on the front window to get her attention when he was dropping something off. In retirement, Connie is looking forward to the flexibility to visit her children who live in three states, traveling in general, potentially some volunteer work, possibly doing some part-time speech work, and she may flip another house. She will miss her Kraut family and miss collaborating with the great teachers we have. On behalf of the Kraut 23 staff, I'd like to congratulate Connie English on an amazing career. Not everyone gets to retire from their alma mater, but Connie is, and with great pride. We wish her nothing but happiness and amazing memories in her retirement.
Thank you to the board and all the staff and everybody. It's been a, it's been a good run. So, thank you very much. It's been a good run, so thank you very much.
And our last retiree is Kim Orwig. Kim Orwig was born and raised in Tiffin and is a proud 1981 graduate of Colombian High School. She has worked within the Tiffin City School District for 35 and 1/2 years. Her time in Tiffin City started by teaching morning kindergarten at Noble Elementary, followed by morning kindergarten at Noble and afternoon kindergarten at Washington. She became a full-time teacher at Kraut Elementary, but due to high enrollment numbers, those kindergarten classes were conducted in the basement of the First Lutheran Church that year. The following year, she was offered a second-grade position at Kraut Elementary, where she remained for 32 years, working under 10 different principals. Some of Kim's fondest memories at Kraut Elementary include the ice cream socials, teaching thematic units and sewing bears, heading the party planning committee, and much, much more. She will dearly miss her Kraut family, who she has enjoyed teaching with all these years. To quote Kim, "It has been a privilege and an honor teaching primary students and building relationships with them and their families." In her retirement, Kim would like to take a long nap, along with some other undecided activities, which will likely include traveling with her husband Glenn and spending time with her friends and family. On behalf of the Kraut 203 staff, I'd like to congratulate Kim on an amazing career to spend her entire 35-plus-year career in one school district, which is her alma mater, is truly a celebratory achievement. We wish her nothing but happiness and amazing memories in her retirement.
Thank you. I'm speechless. No, it has been enough to teach in the Tiffin City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your years of service and all of the many lives, not just your children, but the family's lives that you have touched and impacted. What an incredible, just an incredible body of work that you each represent. So, thank you very much. That puts us up to five on the agenda, which is committee reports. And we're starting off with Dr. Gase.
Business Advisory Council did meet on April 27th, I believe. And basically, we're still working on problems with work skills and combined sheets and applications for future meetings and locations. I was not able to attend the meeting, but Pat Smith, as she is quite capable, has continued to manage those meetings quite nicely. We have another meeting this Thursday at 8:00 a.m. It will be at the middle school here. And if anyone would like to be involved in the Business Advisory Council, feel free to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gase. Mr. Perez, over to you for Finance and then Legislation.
Okay, we did meet Tuesday and went over the five-year forecast. That's on the agenda for this evening. And in that regard, I'm going to defer to Ms. Perry when she presents that to explain the changes in her assumptions and the changes in the forecast. The other issues we did go over were the summer of cash balances and the check register that we normally do as well. And we did look at several levy scenarios as well, but there's no recommendation to do anything at this point with the new superintendent just reviewing everything that's coming out and understanding that we're going to the second year of the biennial, a year for our legislature and our funding. So, that concludes that report and then legislative liaison part of it. I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Bringing us to Support Services. Support Services did not meet, so then that will take us over to Mr. Williams for Student Achievement and Policy.
Nothing to report this evening for Student Achievement, although we did hear quite a bit from the high school students. So, I don't think I'd want to trump any of that, anyway. Regarding policy and governance, we did meet first week of May, and we discussed the policy services offered by both OSBA and NOELA. And we're not recommending any action at this point. We do have some summaries to provide in the committee report, but again, due to the cost of those services and kind of where we believe our policy manual is at this point, we're not recommending any action. We do think in the future we should continue to look at it, but there's some fairly high ongoing costs associated with some of those services, so we want to defer. We do have some policies to review regarding some of the technology direction from Mr. Weber. And we have a social media public or posting guideline that I did not get submitted in time, so we don't have it to review this evening, but we'll get it out to the board here pretty soon.
Thank you. That brings us to 5.02, which is Superintendent and Assistant Superintendents' Reports.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. I have one item tonight for the board for your consideration and pending approval. It's an updated job description for the Library and Media Specialists. You know, the library at the high school specifically has changed dramatically over the last few years, and not only its appearance, but the services provided there. Technology continues to evolve year in and year out. And so, Mr. Trisler and Mrs. Foote looked at the job description that we currently have, and it's really outdated, to be quite honest. So, what they have done is they have used a combination of the old job description with new language from the American Association of School Libraries to include into the new job description. So, it's really just an updated job description of the current job and the uniqueness of what Mrs. Foote does in our library and media center at the high school. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bose.
Continuing on with the superintendent report, I'm not going to go over and repeat all of the items that Mr. Trisler shared. We certainly had a great year this year, and I do want to thank all of our students, staff, teachers, and administrators for their efforts this year. As was stated, there were many challenges as we transition out of COVID in the aftermath of the pandemic this year. I think our team did a great job in meeting the needs of our students and making progress in all areas on their educational plans. I do appreciate everyone's help and support in making our graduation for the class of 2022 such a great event this past weekend. We had to move the event to Sunday due to inclement weather, as was mentioned, but I think it worked out very well. We had a great turnout. I want to congratulate the class of 2022. In terms of next year, we are in the process of transitioning to our summer programming already. The Budding Genius Program will begin this Thursday. Plans are still being made for the Extended Learning Program that will follow soon after. Our Last Day with Students will be this Wednesday. Mr. Bose is busy continuing to fill a number of vacant positions for the 2022-2023 school year. We have a number of qualified candidates in all those various areas that we will be interviewing in the near future. Principals have been meeting to organize their schedules for the next school year using the new start time and ending times that were approved by the Board of Education in April. The school buildings will be shifting their opening times for students to arrive either up or back 15 or 30 minutes, depending upon the building, to accommodate the new start times. In meeting with Mr. Conger, the Transportation Department is finishing up their transition to the new scheduling software program. So, they will be starting to develop those new bus routes, I believe Friday at the end of this week. So, Mr. Conger reports that registration for transportation for next year is underway, and that requests that he has received up to date have been very typical and normal for this time of year. Mr. Conger continues to try to recruit more bus drivers so that they can service all of the routes that will be planned. So, that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
When do you expect to have the building opening times for parents for the fall?
As soon as we know what the bus routes and what the ridership is going to be for next year. So, that's going to be probably, we're looking at June or July.
Superintendent, I have a question to follow up on the achievements that we heard today with all our students. I've been kind of frustrated because whenever I look at our social media or Instagram pages, whenever we have an athlete or somebody in the high school do something, it's not like immediately out there. We had a track meet Saturday, had several qualifiers, and it's not on our social media. I think we had one pair of runners at one time. Baseball team advanced, it's nowhere. Tennis team finished their season, nowhere. The same thing with the competition teams and other things in businesses. We're just not seeing that. So, I think if you look at our social pages, you get to see the impression that apparently we have some great schools, and then we don't see the rest of our picture. And I think that was one of the comments that came out from the audience previously is, "We're not selling ourselves, and these kids do amazing things, but it would help if we were more current and quicker with that." I know the other school in town does it pretty actively. And so, this isn't a critique, but in terms of supernet, what could we do different? What could we do better for next year coming in so that we could address that?
I think the district, we've had conversations about that Communications Director position, and I think we have a position that's been vacant all year in central office that has been restructured to primarily handle those communication-type duties. Did not get filled this year. I think that's something that needs to be filled going forward because we all realize the importance of communication and how critical that is to a business or a school district, in our case, telling their story. And we all realize that if we're not telling our story, somebody else is telling it for us. And so, it's incumbent upon us to be proactive and ahead of the curve where we can be and to get those stories out into the community. So, we do that where we can, but your point is well-taken. And I think the answer to that is having somebody in charge of that as part of their major responsibilities.
I want to circle back to the busing. So, I understand that transportation is building out those routes. My question is, when will the, we have the information on each building on when those doors are opening so that parents can plan accordingly.
We will have that as soon as the principals submit their schedules to us and can identify. Right now, we're looking to shift those times either up or back, depending upon if the school is opening sooner or later next year, to be corresponding to what those times are this year. And the plan is to start there and then to see what type of demand we're going to have in those buildings to have either those doors open sooner, probably sooner in most cases, and to see if we have, if the current supervision is going to be able to handle the number of students. Those are things we're just not going to know until we have the bus routes in place, our enrollment set. We don't know what parent schedules are going to be. We've not been contacted by parents as of yet. We don't know what the local daycare providers' schedules are going to be able to offer yet. So, those are details that are important, that are going to need to be worked out here this summer.
I think it's very important. I also want to point out, the principals are being very proactive. I know the middle school and the high school has devised a plan, and the elementary principals also have done the same. We just want to make sure that all of that is communicated out at the same time. So, we will do the very best that we can to get that out in the coming weeks. But please understand, they are being very proactive, and they're doing everything they can. And they just want to make sure that everything kind of rolls out seamlessly with that communication so that there isn't a miscommunication.
So, we have a goal, I'm understanding we have a goal to communicate all of this to families, because some of those pieces that transportation needs, they can't get until parents know how to plan.
There are some moving pieces that we cannot obviously lay out, but when the buildings will be open, we do know that information. I don't want to announce it tonight just because I want to make sure that we have it all together and we put it out and everybody gets the same piece of information. But the principals have been working very diligently on that.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Zoller? That takes us on to 5.03, Director of Operations Report and Recommendations.
I don't have a lot of information. Mr. Daniels had an emergency and couldn't be here this evening. So, the only thing that I have is letter C, Ohio Summer Food Service Program, which, in my understanding, just needs to be shared at a board meeting that we're offering that program. So, I have a document here to read. All children ages 1 through 18 are eligible to receive free meals during the summer months at participating program sites. Individuals ages 19 through 21 who have been identified as having mental or physical disabilities and are following IEPs, Individual Education Programs, through their current enrollment in educational programs also are eligible for free summer meals. For more information, if you are interested, the number is 1-866-3-HUNGRY, This information will also be found online at our webpage. So, I wanted to share that tonight. Thank you.
With Mr. Daniels not here, I don't know if Dr. Zoller or Mr. Bose, you can help on the facilities updates. We've had a number of individuals, a number of coaches, a number of questions come up about space, about tracks, about tennis courts. Do we have any updates on where these things stand?
Mr. Daniel did not present me any information to share tonight. I know, you know, we, the team, are working on those, you know, issues. You know, the track situation. We've been in communication with the company. Their attorneys were looking to move forward with the next steps, whatever that may be, trying to avoid litigation, as that will be costly for both sides. You know, I would expect that to be attended to this summer. I know part of this was waiting till the spring sports season was over, so the track would be available to, you know, to be looked at and repaired where need be. So, those things are all in the process of, you know, moving forward, but I don't have details without Mr. Daniel being here tonight to be able to provide tennis. You know, we're not in the process of putting bids out to build a new tennis facility, obviously. So, the tennis courts, that situation is going to be, needed to be attended to either to somehow use our current facility again one more year or to look for an alternative site next year. Those seem to be our options, our only options at this point. So, I know that Mr. Daniel is looking into that as well.
Thank you.
Regarding the tennis courts, though, and I know you're not Mr. Daniels, has the recent inflation caused any issues regarding the cost of courts at this point? Or you have no idea regarding that? And second of all, we just sold the West Junior property, and so now we have that PI money, which we can't use for, you know, teacher salaries and stuff like that, but we could use that towards something like that, correct?
Absolutely could be, if that's, you know, desired.
But have you heard anything about this now being a bad time to build because of inflation at this point?
I think many districts are struggling with that very issue, just construction in general. It's not getting any cheaper, certainly. Whether or not that's, you know, that's a driving factor. I mean, I think the need certainly is there. At some point, something's going to need to be done. There's going to need to be money invested. I think, obviously, part of the challenge has been, you know, looking to try to fold this or incorporate this into a master facilities plan so that, you know, there's a comprehensive focus on all of these facilities, and it's not just being attended to in a piecemeal way. So, you know, I think the price tag on the estimate for the tennis court stadium, I'll call it a stadium complex, was higher than what was, you know, maybe anticipated at that time even. And that was really even before maybe some of the other inflationary economics has kicked in. So, again, I think right now, those things are on pause a little bit. And again, I think this will, these are things that I think will be better facilitated as the new superintendent comes in and is able to process them and to work forward in a planning process next year.
Several months ago, I spoke with Bryce Kuhn with the Tiffin Parks and Recs, and he told me that it was going to be on their 2023 budget for new tennis courts for the city of Tiffin. And I wanted, I mentioned that I'd like... And I wondered, I mentioned that I'd like to see Tiffin City Schools reach out and combine our efforts to build something that would be above and beyond either one that could do individually. Has anybody addressed that?
I have not. To my knowledge, I'm not sure if anybody has.
Any other questions? Okay. This moves us into item six, which is opportunity for the public to address the board. Per the board policy, each person addressing the board can, shall give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During that time period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so.
Brian Cooper, 2643 West Township Road, 1177. First, let me start by thanking both the Tiffin City School Board, School Board of Education, and those in attendance for lending your ear tonight. Like I said, my name is Brian Cooper, the husband of longtime Tiffin City School teacher and coach and inspire of thousands of our area youth, Amy Cooper. My wife was informed a couple of months ago that her varsity basketball coaching position will not be renewed. It was heartbreaking news for a person with a spotless record as a coach of varsity track for 30 years, JV volleyball, and varsity basketball for the last three years. She was upset, but my first thoughts, I'll admit, were selfish. I thought, finally, we can take a winter vacation and go somewhere warm, sit on a beach, and hey, I get my wife back. But I quickly realized, as she was hurting, how much coaching basketball meant to her and how hard she has worked to make everything as good as possible for these girls. She has been involved in basketball in one way or another for as long as I can remember. I want to get right to the point. I, along with many others, do not feel Amy was given a fair shot by our A.D., Dan Hartzell. When he told her he was not renewing her contract for next season, he was taking the program in a new direction, is what he shared. I know being an A.D. is one of the toughest jobs out there. I have friends who were in that spot. It's not easy. And Dan and I have always gotten along well. So I will not act like I can fill his shoes, but everything about this felt wrong. I am not going to stand up here and bash Mr. Hartzell, but instead I will focus on Tiffin City School's surprising loss. A person who loves to coach volleyball, track, and basketball. If I had to bet, basketball is her favorite. She says to me that they're all equal. In a time where employers are struggling to find employees, and we all know that teachers and coaches are some of the most underpaid people out there, and you have a coach that has committed herself to the community, to the school system, and to these girls. Amy and I aren't going anywhere. We love Tiffin and we love Tiffin City Schools. She went to school here. She set records here and has coached here for 30 years. She was recently inducted into TC's Hall of Fame. She serves on boards and never misses an athletic boosters meeting as a coach, which means she goes to those meetings voluntarily. Amy has me get the house ready every year for the annual girls' basketball Christmas party, which is a tradition that Amy has kept alive. She runs summer league basketball, which by the way, may not be happening this year because of Amy's forced departure. Many area coaches have been reaching out to her about the league, but she has responsibly not discussed the topic. And yet several TC students were told about the non-renewing of her contract shortly after it happened and asked Amy about it before she even shared the news with our own daughters. How does that happen? She also now, alongside Mr. Koch, successfully runs Tiffin's largest sporting event, the Cross Country Carnival. That event does miraculous things for our economy, and it was put in the hands of someone that is trusted. She has left kids with countless athletic skills and even more importantly, with great memories. I'm at a loss, Tiffin City Schools. Is this someone that you really want to lose as your girls' varsity basketball coach? It's easy to be a coach when you have all the pieces that make winning easy. But your real test on just how good of a coach you guys have is one that handles those down years where you're developing young talent and just maybe all the pieces of that winning puzzle aren't there yet. It happens in all sports. Coach Ken had seven wins, two wins, and three wins in his first three years as the boys' varsity basketball coach. He's still here and he's doing great. And yes, you have some parents sometimes that get upset when their team is not winning or they feel their daughter is not getting the playing time they deserve. In fact, one of those parents has already pulled his daughter out of Tiffin City Schools, put her in another area school with the announcement, even with the announcement of Tiffin City Schools looking for a new girls' basketball coach. Where's the dedication there? Was it really about the coach at that point? I'm a father of two girls who played sports. I understand that feeling. But I respected the coach's decision, whomever they were, and an A.D. should not bow to the pressures of those few parents that scream loudest. Larry had those years. Amy's dad was one of the parents doing the yelling. But Larry had good support and he built an incredible program over the years. Amy was his assistant coach for some of those years. She makes the sport not just about competition, but about commitment, about teamwork, and about having fun, about smiles and memories and not hating practice every day, even on those down years. And given the opportunity, she would have brought some more of those good winning years back to TC girls' basketball. From what I understand, Mr. Hartzell's new direction is a 22-year-old with no coaching experience. Please do not take that as I am criticizing her. I'm not. I wish her all the success as I do all TC sports. We all have to start our careers at some point, but I was somewhat baffled by the new direction. There are so many ways to address this topic, but Amy has very carefully and respectfully followed the chain of command. She has met with her union rep, met with Colombian principal, Mr. Trisler, and met with the superintendent, Dr. Zoller, and the assistant superintendent, Mr. Bose. All of these, all of the issues that make this wrong are well documented by Amy, along with the support she received along the way in compiling all of these notes. I asked Amy for these so I could read and reread them and summarize them and then share them tonight with you all. But then I thought about it, and I do not believe in this public forum behind this podium that this is the place to read these. I do not want to partake in public bashing. I am instead asking the board, now that you are officially aware, to review this information. Look at the hard facts, the testimonies, and some of the issues you may not be aware of over the last three years. Please discuss them, then meet with Amy, Dan, and render whatever decision you feel appropriate. I leave you with this. But should an A.D. that has recently said he will leave here as soon as he gets the chance, and both a principal and a superintendent that are moving on, both of whom I respect, be making the decision on whether a woman that has dedicated her life to Tiffin City Schools, both as a teacher and a coach, stays or not? I, along with so many others, think not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Any other members of the public?
Madam President, if no one else is going to speak, I do have an email that a parent asked me to share with the board. She sent it to the board, but she asked if we can share it at the meeting today. I don't have my reading glasses. Do you want me to try to read it or?
We received an email from Erin Bowles. I'm going to read this as it is written. "I just wanted to take a moment to let you know how wonderful all the staff at the Tornado Academy is. They take time out of their schedule at all hours to help students succeed. They go above and beyond. They make kids feel welcome, which is huge for a lot of these kids that feel very pushed out of the schools due to bullying and other issues. I cannot say enough good things about the whole staff. They work so well as a team and they communicate well. If there are questions, they take time to answer them and they respond very quickly and kindly. These teachers and administrators are a breath of fresh air to our public school experience. I don't think they get the recognition they deserve."
I would like to speak, but I don't really want to walk to the podium. Jennifer Kuhn, 191 Lindsay Avenue, Tiffin, Ohio. I just really want to express my gratitude to the entire staff of Tiffin City Schools, our tech department, our maintenance, our grounds, our aides, our bus drivers, our teachers, our kitchen staff, our secretarial staff, I'm sure I'm probably forgetting some, including our principals and our administrators. We have been through tough years, but as a team, we continue to strive and move forward. And I just really want to thank everyone for everything that they've done up to this point and everything they will continue to do. We are TC and we believe in what we do. And we thank the board for what you're trying to do in making the next decision. And we really look forward to finding out that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? That will bring us to the consent agenda, which is at seven, item seven. So we have approve the minutes from the April regular and special and May board meetings. There are a number there. Approve the treasurer's report for April, 7.02. 7.03 is employment. Underemployment is the contract that was just brought up regarding non-renewal. Trying to find the next one. 7.04 is donations and grants. 7.05 is stipends. 7.06, certificate of fiscal officer. Do I have a motion? Does anybody want to pull 7.03 out for discussion? What's your motion, Dr. Gase?
I'll just make a motion to approve.
To approve the consent agenda? Do I have a second?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So since the addendum is also 703, does that get included?
It does. So if we would like to discuss just that or have some pieces, we need to pull that out.
So, Dr. Gase, you're...
I just made a motion so we could talk about it.
Okay.
So with a second, we can discuss it.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I know there's some sense of urgency. I believe we did receive an email from the athlete's parent regarding a delay in off-season training for the girls' basketball program. I haven't spoken with the athletic director, so I don't really know much about the issue at hand. Does anybody have any other input?
Since it's on the consent agenda, it just needs one member not to agree to put it on there. If you don't feel comfortable with it and want it out for further discussion, or is that what he's asking for? So...
Yeah. So if someone, if anyone is uncomfortable with 7.03 being a part of consent agenda, we can pull that out. We can vote on the rest of the consent agenda and then we can discuss 7.03.
I think that's fine. I have, I think it's a good idea. Let's get the other issues on the consent agenda approved.
So Mrs. Perry, what does that need to look like?
So you would be modifying the agenda because right now it's part of 7.03, which is part of the consent agenda, which just requires one vote. So I believe we would need a motion to remove it from the consent agenda with a second and then a roll call vote to do that. And then we can go back and vote on the consent agenda because we already have that motion in second. Makes sense?
Yep. So we need a motion to remove 7.03 or just that item?
Just that item because 7.03 has a lot of other, yeah.
Okay. So we need a motion and a second, if there is one, to remove the addendum essentially.
Can I make the motion just to approve or do I have to make a motion to remove it and then a motion to approve? Okay. So I make a motion to remove some, the specific...
To remove the addendum.
The addendum, yeah.
Do we have a second?
I think it's worth a little bit of discussion. Yeah.
Mrs. Perry?
Sorry, second.
Okay. Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez? Dr. McBride?
Yes. So now we need to go back and approve the consent agenda.
Correct.
So we just need to vote on that because we've already had a motion and a second. Mrs. Perry?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. So now we'll enter into discussion regarding the addendum that was presented, which is the non-renewal of the head varsity basketball coach, Mrs. Cooper. And your question was, what information do we know or what do we not know?
Yeah, I mean, did Dan speak with superintendent or assistant superintendent, any insight?
We did have a meeting, as was indicated. I did meet with Amy and with Mrs. Joyce, along with Mr. Bose. So we did have a meeting and they presented information. We met with Mr. Trisler and Mr. Hartzell, Mr. Bose and I did. And, you know, so we got, I guess, both sides of the story. Their recommendation is to, to go with a different, to go in a different direction with head girls' basketball coach going forward, based on the status of the program, where we are after three years in the development and the direction that they felt like it was going. Also had a meeting with at least one parent. I know Mrs. McBride was part of that meeting as well of girls' basketball player. So yeah, I mean, we've had some meetings. We had had some information. This is the recommendation of the athletic director and high school principal.
I just had one, I just had one question. The different direction, was that, like, discussed a year ago or two years ago? Or was there any discussion about remediation or some type of change that was expected from the coach?
Well, I wasn't here two years ago.
Well, I mean, did anybody bring it up? Did Dan bring it up that there was a discussion about different direction? What is that different direction, I guess, is what I would like to know.
I don't recall there being remediation.
Well, I mean, I just say, you know, suggestion. Like, I know with other coaches, we've set, Dan had set them down and said, hey, we don't like this part of the direction the program's taking. We'd like to see some improvement in this area. Or give us your proposal, how are you going to change? And I just want to know if that kind of thing was done or if this is just, because it, you know, it just appears as though maybe it was sprung at us. That's the appearance again. And that's why I just like to know.
Similar question. So we've, this isn't the first slew of emails or parent phone calls we've had regarding the non-renewal, the job posting process, especially around coaches. And again, I don't, I echo what Mr. Cooper says. I don't envy that role. I'm not an A.D., nor have I ever been. But there do seem to be some concerning pieces or at least some questions that I have around the policy or the protocol. What's the evaluation system look like? Are we looking at records? Are we, when is a coach given an evaluation? Are they given time to improve? Like, what does this look like? Because I just did some quick looking at records and it looks like the records are fairly similar of coaches who were kept versus not kept. So I'm wondering what there's other pieces are or how our employees are given the opportunity to address those concerns. If we want a new direction, is a coach who's been in that position and has those established relationships given the opportunity to do that? Can you speak to what the protocol is or the policy or the process or any of that?
Well, again, I, I think that, you know, these, these contracts are all one year. They're, they're, all of our supplementals are non-renewed at the end of one year. There's an evaluation process that goes on. In talking with, you know, Mrs. Cooper, I would say that there appears, you know, I mean, there appears to be some inconsistencies about the evaluation process in general that, that I think, you know, are, are a factor in this, in this, I guess, question. Again, I am, I am bringing forward the recommendation of the athletic director and high school principal. Having met with them after our meeting, they, they felt like this was the direction that they wanted to maintain going. And if, if this is something you'd like me to look into further and review further, I'm certainly willing to do that. As, as was mentioned by Dr. Gase, certainly we are getting here at the end of the school year and it's, it's almost ready for summer programming to start and the like. And, and so there is an essence of time that we're backed up against. But, I mean, certainly I think we can, we can look at those options.
I think in consideration to the present board, I think I'd appreciate that, given the exodus of our superintendent and principal and reported consideration for exiting, exiting the athletic director. I've not heard of that, but, yeah, it does put the onus on us, doesn't it? I mean, we're going to be left holding the bag, so to speak.
Well, I'm concerned that, that a recommendation was brought forward when there's an awareness of inconsistencies about evaluation. So it sounds like you recognize that and this evaluation, this, this recommendation was still brought forward. So I have distinct concerns around that. So if there are inconsistencies or there's any issues in the evaluation process on which determinations are made or recommendations are given, if there's an issue with those that's noted, I, I think those need to be explored. And I have grave concerns as to why any students would be aware of any personnel issues prior to that being shared or voted upon or any of those pieces. Those are my current concerns.
I try to stay as far away from this as possible because Amy and I go back to 1993 when she was Amy Shar. Amy Shar and Brian Cooper both were in my geometry class and now they're man and wife. I've gone to some of the basketball games. I've not gone to a lot of them. I've sat by myself because I don't want to, in any way, be involved with any of the processes. I, I know there was a concern with individual growth of talent and players. One thing I've talked to, to Amy about and Brian is that the age of a coach coaching three seasons in a row makes you a dinosaur. It is extremely hard to do. Brian made one comment, he said, geez, I was kind of happy. She'd be home in the wintertime. He changed that tune, but he did mention that. I can also tell you from being a former coach that basketball is a year-round sport. You've got everything. Summer league has been going on since, I think, around 1992. I don't think it's ever missed a year. That takes a lot of time. You've got weight room. You've got open gyms. You've got team camps, all these things. And I don't know, and I purposely don't know, whether we are continuing to do these things because I know Amy's also in volleyball, which is a year-round sport. Track is not, although the pole vaulters are working year-round. So it is very, very tough to be a three courts, three-sport coach in today's society.
Okay. First of all, I just want to say that regarding Ms. Cooper, none of this has to do anything with her ability as a teacher. And I think we're proud of her as an educator and none of this should be meant to reflect in that way, which is, I think, why my concern with the process has been that apparently this has been going through students and staff before it ever came to the board. And I don't think that's very professional in that regard, that our employees are entitled to that. I think we heard that the decision was made months ago and yet it's just coming to us before the season basically starts. And we've seen this before. We saw it with, with baseball as well, where we posted, reposted. The students had to get together, put pressure onto somebody to hire a coach. And we ended up hiring, I think, in February. The evaluation process, we've had that come up before. And so the concerns I have, what is going on administratively that we can't run this process? That we have coaches in place before seasons start and that decisions are made early on? We're bored. We don't make HR decisions. We respect what the superintendent recommends going through his principal and his A.D., but this is now twice in one year now that this has happened. And so I looked over the agenda and I think we have one soccer coach for the fall already. I didn't see the other one on there. And so I don't want to start off with the first year where I was here, where we're hiring football coaches after the season started and then having to explain, well, maybe they didn't complete back, maybe they didn't do this. But it's like, it's, it's your job to do that, to get these things done, that you can present it to the board so that we can, you know, just have our answers, you know, questions answered and we're not facing questions like this. So, again, that's the only thing I ask is that we be presented with this in a timely and regular manner, following the same procedure for everyone.
I've, I've also served as the athletic director. I can tell you that in my 35 years I counted, I think we've had 15 athletic directors. So the average is just over two years for each athletic director because the athletic directorship at Tiffin City Schools is too big for one person. It has been. When I first came to the district in 1983, we had two athletic directors. We then went to one and a half and then we went to one. And we've been with one for at lea-, well, up until a year or two ago when we brought in an assistant to do the junior high. In that time, we've also added four teams playing football. One of them now TU goes elsewhere. We have lacrosse and we have Tiffin University Soccer and our own soccer on our field. I can also tell you from experience that I was called in Boston, Massachusetts to schedule TU's band on the football field during a vacation. That's what the athletic director does. The athletic director also should have a year-end report from every coach. Those should be evaluated every year. I don't know if that's going on. I know it did when I was the A.D. for the one year. We used to have an athletic council to oversee some of these things. I don't think that's going on now. The athletic department has been overlooked for a number of years. It's understaffed and that's part of the problem, I think, with timing.
I go, echo the, maybe frustration that it's possible that students have information or communicating with a coach prior to us having that information. And I think even hearing Mr. Cooper's comments, it, it sounds as though there's information out about who may be a frontrunner for the position that has technically not yet been vacated. So, I mean, these are all, these are all a little bit disappointing. We certainly have, I think, received more comments from parents than we have from the administration about the issue, which it's, it's, it's hard to make a decision based on feedback from, from parents and community members because we're going to get equal comments, pros and cons. All right, we're receiving comments of support, right? And we're receiving comments of, of not support. So it's, it's very challenging. I think we're, we're being asked to make a decision to support a new direction, but don't have information on what the new direction is. That's a, it's a very tough position for us to be in. I think what we do know right now is that the, the basketball program, the girls' basketball program is operating without a direction. We have someone who believes they will not be asked to come back to coach, but we don't have anybody who's taking direction for the program right now. It's, it's in a bit of a floundering state. We have parents asking, when are open gyms? I guess, as board members, we certainly can't answer those questions. So, I mean, these are all things outside of the recommendation to not renew the contract. But don't renew the contract in favor of a new direction or a different direction. But that's a big, it's a bit of a, a vacuum of information around the new direction.
I, I have all those same questions. I also try to really mind the line of like, our role is not to do day-to-day operations. Our role is not to do the A.D.'s job. That's not our role. That's not our job. My concern is the piece around the policy and the protocol, and those do fall under our purview. And my concern is around the statement that there are inconsistencies about the evaluation process, that we were aware of those and that this recommendation is still brought to this board. Therein lies my concern. I do not feel comfortable with, with those components. My job is not to be a high school principal. My job is to trust and respect all the people we put in place. But it does sound as though there were flaws in this process that weren't attended to and the recommendation was still brought forward.
Ms. Perry, am I wrong? But since it's a recommendation of the superintendent not to renew, that we would need actually four votes by the board to actually override that?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I apologize.
I think I've read that since it was a recommendation and that we would be hiring someone. You didn't recommend we need four, not just a quorum of the board to do it. I would ask, I know we're meeting tomorrow. I don't know if it's short notice because I think I'd like to discuss some of these elements with an executive session. So...
If, if, if it's a possibility, I, I'll just pull the recommendation. Is that a possibility, Mrs. Perry?
It's been removed from the consent agenda. So it would take board action to put it back on the agenda.
Do we meet an executive session tomorrow?
Oh, for tomorrow?
Are we able to adjust that agenda?
We did not publicize that as a reason for meeting. And we have to do that within 24 hours. So it would be too late to do that now.
We have to meet, we got to meet sometime in the future contract meeting.
So is it possible for us to table this until there is further discussion, further explanation? We're going to likely have to have a special board meeting to address a superintendent contract coming soon. Can we discuss this then? Can, will that give administration enough time to go back and explore and come back with some more answers? Does that, is that a possibility? Not even certain, does Dr. Zoller share?
It's already been removed on tonight's agenda.
But we want to have some kind of decision made.
So I, I think the suggestion is we, we are going to have to, or we're meeting tomorrow for interviews. We will have to meet again in the next few days to discuss contracts.
Mr. Hartzell probably be the person that we need to talk to.
So we can invite him into, not tomorrow night because it wasn't posted for that, but the next special board meeting?
Yeah, I think we need to speak with Mr. Hartzell.
Because it's been removed from the agenda, so there's no voting on it currently, right, Mrs. Perry?
I believe unless, Mr. Perez, you have a concern that...
No, we're not voting on it.
Right, if we were voting on it to override the recommendation, we would need a four to retain or to spike his recommendation. And I think part of the executive would be to see if we could have counsel available as well.
I think that only applies to teachers.
So since it has been removed, it, it can stay removed without being voted on and we can then, not tomorrow, we don't have enough time to notice that to the public. But for our next special board meeting, we can invite in Mr. Hartzell or union reps or Mrs. Cooper, whoever, to be able to get a further understanding. Correct?
Mrs. Spark, I'm going to ask you what, the reason for a meeting tomorrow night? What, what reason was publicized?
Employment.
Do you... If it was the employment of a public employee singular, then that would limit us.
While she's looking that up, there is a sense of urgency in this matter because team camps are filling up and documentation has to get out, weight training, et cetera.
So in those pieces, when we are in the absence of a, a coach or a named coach, I mean, we've had numbers of searches happening. Is it then the A.D.'s role to then run those? What does that look like?
Yes. The A.D. makes the recommendation. Principal makes the recommendation. Superintendent does, it comes to us. But the A.D. is the one that does the interviewing for coaches.
But in the, in the interim, because there's probably times where we don't have one or the other or in transition, the A.D. then would run those camps or make sure the students are getting registered in those pieces? Mr. Trisler's saying yes, so I'm looking at...
Generally, a JV coach would take care of that.
Okay, so we have options, but there is a sense of urgency. Do we have a JV coach? I'm not saying that I, it's not my role to disagree on personnel or those pieces, but there is a, a policy, protocol concern here that I, has been, has been noted. So I think that those need to be explored before we can move forward.
There's, there's two sides to every story. In theory, we don't know a coach, any explanation as to whether we pick up their option or not my first year, my second day on the job. But arrested coaching, he wasn't a woman. Well, our policy was not safe. Mr. Kisebeth, when we were in the room, did give evaluations. She was given a chance to have an evaluation. The association did not agree with that as part of the process. In hindsight, it would have been better just to let her know. I think our athletic director went above and beyond. Above and beyond, he tried to sit down and explain where he felt we were as a program. Fully support that.
Yep, we have a lot of leadership change going on. And so I also think that, you know, it, it probably an executive session is a better place to discuss some of these things, especially considering some of the pieces around how do students know what the policy and protocol is? And, you know, if this is what we've done for X amount of years, doesn't make it the right way to do it. So I think that those are some pieces that is best to be discussed in an executive session. Mrs. Perry?
Mrs. Spark confirmed that based on the notice that we publicized for tomorrow night, we would not be able to discuss this matter.
So I do think that we will have another special board meeting that will probably have to be set likely after tomorrow. So still quickly, so I'm hoping that we can get this piece on that agenda. I'm going to look at my board members. I found all right. We'll add a piece to it. So then, Mrs. Perry, are we good to move on to the, to action items?
Yes.
All right. So this takes us to 8.01, approved staff handbooks.
These are, these were presented last month for a first read. It's just all the staff handbooks for elementary, middle school, high school buildings. I believe the changes were cosmetic in nature, just mostly dates for next year.
Entertainer motion?
So move.
Thank you.
Second. Second, by Perez.
Any discussion?
Is there any items in those handbooks regarding school start times?
I don't believe they are at this time because of the fact we weren't aware and sure what that was going to look like quite yet.
Okay, so we'll have another update at some point in the near future to approve?
If we choose to add them in there, we could revise them again. Yeah.
That's gonna come up in the next, next item.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Perry?
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.02, approved Colombian parent student handbooks.
Actually, 802 and 803 are reflective of the changes made last month when it comes to, in terms of year-long courses being changed to semester courses. I don't believe start times are included in this change, so again, we could have a revision as soon as those times come out.
That revision, that revision will be on page three of the parent-student handbook. It still shows the original times.
So then we'll still have another revision to address here in a few weeks.
Yeah, we could, yes.
Entertain a motion? Get a motion? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
The only discussion is, so we're approving it with the idea that we're going to amend it. So should we, you need the new book out, or should we just wait till it's amended? And we're approving it once?
We could probably table it.
Okay.
And put the revised start times in the June board meeting, and just do it all at one time. What? Yes. I'm not sure if we still print those. So. We can, we can table it until June.
So do we need to table 8.03 as well, or just 8.02?
We would need a motion to table 8.02. No one's moved on 8.03. So I believe that recommendation can just be removed by the administration, but 8.02 will require a motion and a second and a vote to remove it.
We're laying a loss tonight. So, Mr. Rose, do you, so 8.02, we need to table. So.
Yes.
All right, so we need a motion and a second to table.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. Mrs. Perry?
Mr. Perez? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Mr. Rose, do you want 8.03 on there, or does that not have start times in it, so we can move forward with it?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rescind what I said. Since you've already adopted the agenda with this recommendation on it, I think you do need to do a motion to table it. Sorry about that.
I think we only need to table it if there's start times in it. If there's not, then we don't need to, correct?
Yes, that would be correct, and I'm not sure if it has the start times in it, which I don't, I don't think the curriculum guide would have that as that critical, so we can probably approve this one.
Yep. I will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mrs. Perry?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Perez? Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.04, approved school nurse agreement.
It's just an annual renewal with Mercy Health Hospital for, to provide services for our district-wide school nurse.
Thank you. Entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Dr. Gase, you're abstaining?
Say what?
Are you abstaining on this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, still. Any other discussion? All right. Mrs. Perry?
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Abstain.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.05, approve the mental health recovery services board contract.
Yep, this contract provides mental health care services for the district. Recommending we continue that program.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
And then it's, was there a second? I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Perry.
And then for discussion, this is the annual grant, right, or?
Correct.
Discussion. We're down to 44,000 this year, correct? Last year, do you recall what the allocation was at 80 or 70? How much? 59?
So with that continuing to diminish, and we have a two, is it two years on our SR funds? Is that where we are? So are there, I don't... Yeah, so I'm wondering, like, do we, have we had discussions around a light item regarding social emotional health? Do we have plans for sustainability as these funds continue to decrease? Are we allocating funds each year so that when these dollars go away, we can continue serving student needs? Do we know where these discussions are? Thank you.
I'd like to express my thanks to the board at the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board of our multiple counties for warning us this grant again. I think ultimately, we're supposed to become sustainable, and I think that's why we had those discussions about trying to steer people towards Medicaid, so we can try to get those people on Medicaid that can do so, so that would free up some of the grant money. But I guess, you know, we're still getting a bigger need, and we're, you know, have to find a revenue source for it.
And I absolutely, I think we have a phenomenal board, a phenomenal director who's always been a huge champion of the district. I do think that we need to, in earnest, look forward at how we are going to sustain this. The projections after and during the pandemic are that we haven't seen the peak of need, and that we are not going to see the peak for another five years. The need is only going to increase, and while our business is education, without that foundational piece of social, emotional, healthy, you can't learn. So I do think that we need to continue the discussions around how are we going to be building this into the budget, once some of these dollars continue to dissipate.
Sharon, not to put you on the spot, but we were supposed to, we got a social worker that we specifically went after a social worker to, we could do some billing of Medicaid. Are we having any success with that billing for services for social? Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of.
But we could bill under a Medicaid code for social services, as long as we have a licensed social, social worker.
Some, as long as they open up.
Yeah, are, are you referring to a social worker added to our staff?
No, I mean for like, services that Ms. Miller's providing, there's some that...
Okay, so she is a contracted service? So...
Well, that goes to the ESC then?
Yeah, because it's federal funding, we always have to have three quotes for a contracted service. If it reaches a certain threshold, then we need to do a request for proposal. So if that wasn't done, then we can't...
For us, does the ESC do the billing then?
So she's...
Not that I'm aware of.
Because it's, it's that state funding, not fed, it's Medicaid.
And it depends on what she's doing.
It's considered federal. The auditors look at it as federal funding, and then they require, they require the federal procurement. Yes.
The feds give some state money. The state decides how to spend Medicaid money.
The Medicaid auditors consider it federal money, and they risk, they expect federal procurement regulations to be followed. I understand that it flows through the state of Ohio, but they still require federal procurement.
What I, what I'm saying is that we, we're not getting any.
Correct.
Billable services.
Correct.
Can I speak about something I learned about today? So I attended our counselors' meeting today, and one of the things that we talked about was Medicaid billing, and trying to make sure that we had an understanding of how that kind of works. So with Medicaid billing, basically, essentially, what they're doing is they require families to complete a process. So if they're Medicaid eligible, they have to fill out all of this paperwork. If they're not Medicaid eligible, services are delivered, but without that track of all that paperwork. So in a sense, it almost becomes discriminatory in that we require an additional amount of work and, and just a flow to get the services provided, so that we can, in fact, provide services to, to all students. And with that Medicaid helping to offset the cost for our students who do not receive Medicaid services, is my understanding of it. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, you articulated that pretty well. So if we were not, if we were not, if we support the, then we would be, we would have the action of being able to say 100% our students could then receive services, would it be not that filed with Medicaid? However, because we are not to have some students go through that process, and not all students go through that process, it is a discriminatory practice, which then places undue pressure of fidelity and professionalism on our people who are providing the services. It is a really good intention, however, in our attempts to do that, it has not been successful. We have found that in attempting to nail down those parents to fill out that paperwork, if their students do not receive services, that's partly needed services, because now we have the adult component working.
Well, it adds an extra barrier. So it's very well intended, but then while a child, so you, you provide services in the school because it removes barriers. They're there. You don't have the transportation pieces. You don't have to have somebody get there. There's a cost piece. You know, there's all of these pieces that school removes the barrier of. But then when you have to open up as a, do a full DA, then you have to, a parent or guardian has to come in. They have to do all of this paperwork, all of the while, while you're trying to do these pieces, or we have a staff member who's going out to homes after hours or before hours. The child is not getting services in that time. Whereas if you're a child without Medicaid, you start services as soon as requested or referred. Right, Michelle?
And to Mrs. Perry's point, only 44,000 that would be eligible, because the rest of the 100,000, 1,000,000, across several funds that flow through the state, and due to human policy, we are not able to go back to that.
I think all of these pieces highlight how there's, I think the district has done a great job of putting together various revenue streams, but I do think it needs to be an ongoing conversation, because they, there isn't a definite amount of time. These, these funds will stop, and our funds from the board will continue to decrease. So I think that we, in conjunction with our treasurer and our superintendent, we need to be looking at how do we build this in, so that as those funds decrease, we're not having to decrease services to our students, which I believe all the trend lines, and Mrs. Miller, when she was here, showed that our needs are only going up. So if we're not, we're not meeting that or matching that, then we're, I think we're doing a disservice if we're not planning ahead.
No, I think I have two concerns with what was said. One is, I think if they're professional and they're licensed, they'll be fidelity to that client, whether they're Medicaid or not. They get to bill different rates, which one is more, you know, one is more favorable if you're the one billing. But the other thing is Medicaid is not that hard to apply for. We do it at our agency. It's been, you know, made easier to apply for it. Opens up other benefits for health and stuff like that. But I heard that, like, parents are an obstacle, and I get concerned when I hear that, that this is a way of getting around parents, knowing that kids are in counseling or something. And as a parent, I would want to make sure that they're involved.
So those are two separate things.
I know, and that's what I wanted to make sure, that's what I'm hearing, so.
That, it's not saying not letting parents know. Parents have to sign consent.
Okay.
Those are two very different things. But if I, depending on when I work, or my availability to get to the district to fill out paperwork, or my availability for a computer for final forms, or having a school personnel go out at seven in the morning, or eight at night to a home, like, those are some of the barriers, not obstructing parents' awareness or consent.
Well, thank you for clarifying that.
There has to be consent.
Yeah, and no one is saying parents are a barrier. Parents are not a barrier. It is the paperwork and all of those different kinds of things that require us to do all of that, that becomes a barrier.
Point that last year, administration wanted us to force the need of parents and possibly taking SRO, or J and S, or whatever, to sign the agreement. We have to understand that many of our parents have their own trauma that they deal with, and so educating them and removing those barriers is exactly what we want to do.
Any other discussion on this piece? Mrs. Perry?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 8.06, approve Hegarty literacy curriculum price quote.
This is a literacy curriculum that we currently use for pre-K, kindergarten, and elementary schools.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Are we approving a quote or a purchase?
It is not curriculum we are currently using. It is curriculum that we are using starting next year. So you are approving the purchase of... So yes, you are approving the curriculum, but you're approving the purchase of the curriculum for next year.
This is replacing something, then?
No. In regards to the dyslexia laws, and knowing what is being said in regards to literacy, we are trying to be proactive, and we are trying to put supports in place to address students' needs. Therefore, we have done a lot of research this year. We're working with our literacy committee, and this is one of the programs that they had decided to move forward with, and we will be implementing pre-K to three starting next year, and then also expanding out from that.
Ms. K, who headed up that, that process of doing that, that research?
We have Amber Mills, who she is our literacy consultant from the North Central Ohio Educational Service Center. She also worked in conjunction with myself. And then we had building representatives from Washington, Kraut, and Noble. And then, as we met as the district leadership team, preschool is part of the district leadership team, and so they also came into that conversation and that decision to move forward, instituting it with pre-K up through five.
So just a quick thank you to that entire team, following the, the legislation and the news out there, and also listening to our parents in the district, the, the dyslexia piece, being proactive about that, and putting it in place ahead of time, I think is a great step. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, who made that motion?
Dustin?
I, Dr. Gase, thank you.
Somebody? Dustin seconded it.
Yep, I got that part. Yep, I got that part.
Um, Mrs. Perry?
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. Eight point zero seven, approve Apex learning subscription.
This is a renewal for, uh, credit recovery curriculum that we currently use for high school students.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Wonderful, Mrs. Perry.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. Eight point zero eight, approve JB roofing proposal.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
My only concern, when I look at the, the quotes and so forth, is they're only guaranteeing it from anywhere from two to five years. Uh, I understand a flat roof is a pain in the backside, but it seems like that's a small guarantee for that kind of expenditure, but I have no idea, so, just a comment.
Scotty's not here, but I think last time he talked about it, it's just like they're sealing it so they're not replacing the roof, and it's only going to be three to five years if we're lucky. So ultimately, we'd have to make a decision unless you wanted to re-roof them off.
Okay, thank you.
It didn't say anything about a guarantee, it just said expectancy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think we, you know, I saw Walt over the weekend, and, uh, you know, when Mr. Martin was here, we had our own cruise, and we did, that was every year, right? I mean, every year they're up on the roof, doing some repairs.
I don't remember, I just remember the one.
They did, it was pretty much every.
The one year when the roof came off of Columbia High School in a storm, landed on a employee's car.
Never, never a dull day.
No, they did that at Noble last year during, which was kind of, they had him up at the beginning of the school year, that's the only thing. And so it's just a sealant, so it's not a repair, so.
Uh, Mrs. Perry?
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. Eight point zero nine, approve the revised teacher librarian, library media specialist job description.
So moved.
Second.
This is what Mr. Boz talked about earlier, any other discussion? Mrs. Perry?
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Perez. Dr. McBride?
Yes. Eight point eleven, renew administrator contracts.
These administrator contracts are currently up for renewal. Um, all of them have, have, uh, qualify for what they're being recommended for, and we appreciate their service to the district.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry?
Mr. Perez? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Eight point twelve, approve updated five-year forecast and assumptions.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there anything, Mrs. Perry, you'd like to walk us through on these?
I apologize that I was not able to prepare a formal presentation for tonight, um, due to death in my family, but, um, th- this was, um, reviewed at the finance committee last week, um, in, in great detail. Um, you do have the forecast and the assumptions or explanations exhibited back on pages 101 through about 110. Um, one thing that I want to point out that we decided to do at finance was we removed the capital improvements reservation on line 902. So that in essence added $3,750,000 back into the ending balance, um, on June 30th, 2026. Um, I went through all revenue lines and expenditure lines, and adjusted everything for, um, actual, um, fiscal year-to-date figures. So total revenues decreased 1.6 million dollars, unfortunately, over the five years, um, in the forecast. Expenditures decreased 810,000. Um, we removed the annual capital improvements reservation, as I mentioned. So all of those adjustments resulted in a 2.9 million dollar increase to the unreserved fund balance on 6/30/26. So that is now forecasted to total $4,252,259. Um, that is the equivalent of 44 operating days at the end of 2026. Um, for the time being, um, we looked at several scenarios. Um, we decided as a committee that we would postpone the consideration of an additional tax levy until 2023. I did place those scenarios at your seats tonight, um, but they are the ones that we reviewed at finance committee. The, um, next forecast will be in November. Of course, we'll have, we always have, um, newer information at that time, but I do want to point out, um, a lot of the discussions tonight, um, on the, um, assumptions, which when you look at those, what I did was I took November 2021 assumptions, and then I just added at the end of each section in bold, um, basically what changed. Um, but the very last note that I make, and this will be submitted to the state, is that forecasted amounts in fiscal years 2024 through 2026 may be significantly affected by collective bargaining agreements that are not in the forecast, um, and that will occur again in 2023. State budget legislation in 2023 and 2025, those are the biennial cycles, and the expiration of ARPS or funding in 2024. So those are some very significant unknowns in this forecast.
And Ms. Perry, thank you for making it to tonight's meeting, I know it's not easy for you to be here. Um, but you guys have the summaries that she put in there on page 105, it talks about the raise that we just approved and how that came out of ESER 2 money. So we won't have that after 2000, at the end of the, we're going to run out of the ESER money. So that's all extra money we received that we're not going to receive again, and, um, I think that the forecast speaks for itself in that regard.
That, that's a good point, Mr. Perez, that, um, ESER 2, I am bringing it back into the forecast. Um, the general fund will have to sustain that, because that was a replacement. But ARP, ESER, which we call ESER 3, that is not currently sustained in the forecast.
And then you already put the wellness money into the general fund, correct now?
Yes.
What was left?
Yes, that's also reflected in the forecast. Um, if the biennial legislation for state funding, um, does what the last one did, and, and continues the phase-in of the Fair School Funding Plan, then that will offset anything that we need to bring back in to sustain, um, that's being funded by ESER 3 right now. But that, that's an unknown, and the economy has changed greatly, um, since the Fair School Funding Plan was passed as well.
Any other questions for Mrs. Perry? Thank you.
Mr. Perez? Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Eight point, um, one three, approve NCO ESC educational services contract for fiscal year 2023.
It's the annual, um, contract from the Educational Service Center, based on what their estimates for, uh, cost programming for the upcoming school year.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Um, so now we enter into discussion, uh, Dr. Soller, are we receiving a per pupil cost for these services?
I'll have to defer to Mrs. Perry, I don't believe it's per pupil.
So I know last year, especially as it, as it relates to the preschool, so I actually think this is the second year. I think there's been two years where we've discussed this, at least in this setting, for the preschool costs for our students who go to FLC, are we receiving per pupil breakdown?
No, we are not, um, but it, it is, it is a pool of students from several districts. Um, so it depends on the number of students, the per pupil amount will fluctuate. Um, but I do not have enough information to determine that amount.
I, I see right here, it says preschool special needs, per pupil calculation, 36 pupils,
Which comes out 17,774 dollars and one cent per student.
That was my question, so if they have less than 36 students, do we get the per, like, rate for each one back at 17.7? Or are we paying that 600,000, whether we have 36, 38, or 12, or two students in there?
I guess I'd like to know what, what it costs us to educate those special needs kids.
Okay.
How much do we spend, Michelle? Okay.
State ratio being set up. It's all. Give to our most 36 students right now, our classes are ready to accept them. So it would not cost a number of cents at this moment. But there are always students that are coming down the pipe and being identified, so there would be a possibility of having to add a class in the future. But at this moment, as it stands, with the population that I have for next year and our waiting list, there would not be an additional cost with the teachers and staff and the classroom that I have set up right now.
So with that, I mean, we would have, would we have to, uh, lose some typicals?
We would not lose typicals, because we would have left one.
Still have one and one.
Right now, there is the law grabbing going for your higher vice co. They set up the law to like first 2021, and it is not fitting well across the state. It was not written the best. So it is now back for a draft to allow us to have more typical than special needs children for licensing purposes and more having those typicals. Regardless, regardless, I'm starting the year off with about 50 children on IDPs. If I add the other 36, and I'm not suggesting that, that's not my recommendation at this point. Uh, but if I did, we could do that and have 86 children on, on IDPs, and I can easily put the other 86 children in that are typical. I have almost 200 on my waiting list.
Are these 36 students listed, are these all Tiffin City's kids? And if so, how are they determined where they go?
And that is, that is a forecast next year. In what I know, if probably 20 to 25 students are slated for the beginning of the school year, and what is likely when dealing with preschool children, that number is going to double. Especially if Tiffin City is not doing their own screening or playbooks, and we are giving that to someone else, that identification can happen for attendance purposes. So it could grow, we don't know. Uh, we do not know, we do not have any verification resident, uh, residents or district residents. We do verify as they come from Lincoln, but we have not been offered that through our current placement with the Family Learning Center.
All right, so wait, if I'm understanding, we have students who are identified as Tiffin City Schools students, but are going to FLC, but we don't verify residency, but we pay for them at FLC, correct?
What we receive is a line kind of student's name, and then they are attending, and I'm not sure enough of what other information is on there, but there is no address and there is no proof of residency. So in Tiffin City Schools, because we do, um, registration, parents must bring a utility mail, a piece of mail as verification that they live in our district, and that is put in part of their file. Um, I have not received any of that information from the Family Learning Center in my time here.
And did you, sorry, I don't mean to monopolize, did you also say that we're not doing the evaluations for these services?
We do not have. We do not receive any information on where the children are performing, or unless it's through the IP and the progress report, we do not get that.
Is this, is this like an open enrollment type situation where people can choose where to go?
Well, if this is open enrollment.
It's not, it's not that, okay.
It is not an open enrollment, several years ago, we were trying to front the costs, because parents did want to take their children to another placement. And this is not about people not taking their children where they want them to go. Honestly, I believe it's physical responsibility for us to encourage our parents and enforce the state law of open enrollment. Those parents then can choose any place to send their children that will accept that open enrollment. And I will say further, I have children who come from Findlay, Fremont, Castoria, uh, Mohawk, Dali, that have filled out that open enrollment paperwork, and they attend Lincoln.
Just, so we don't require open enrollment for our students to go to FLC? Does that mean that we're responsible, because over the preschool, if you're on an IP, we have to transport, correct?
Yes, because we have this open contract with the ESC, we pay them upfront, and then we also do the transportation, and one of the costs that we do not see on here are the related therapies. So we get an additional charge for occupational therapy and an additional charge for physical therapy. And unfortunately, our interim special ed director and myself have not been included on the additional services that have been added for Tiffin City Schools to pay for that were not approved ahead of time.
Would we still incur the cost for those? Okay.
The only way that we knew that that was occurring is that one of the service providers also provides for us and has shared that information.
Okay, so we would have visibility into that, uh, before the fact instead of after the fact?
Absolutely.
So if.
We would have to say in the screening process, the recommendation, uh, when they are allowed to provide these services, uh, you know, we would, we would see the documented, the data proving the need for it, and we don't have access to it.
So just, I'm just thinking as in my, my mom role, and like my, like my kids when we went through, but also like friends who have kiddos. There's a, a number of districts around us where the policy is, because FLC is phenomenal, my, my own daughter went through FLC. But if we look at, you know, the, that financial responsibility piece, most of the districts around here, their policy is, you have to, if you're going to go there, you open enroll.
Exactly, because our district currently can't provide the services that are offered at the FLC. Before our preschool was open and became this, uh, the special needs preschool, that was the only option. If we had a student that had special needs identified at the age of three, they went to the FLC because that was the facility that they could receive the services. Now in district, we are able to provide FATE, which is free and appropriate education. So therefore, they would need to open enroll, choosing to go somewhere else because we offer it in-house. That's the, that's the highway of the truth.
Okay, so it, it sounds to me like we're just, we, we were providing, we, we were doing what we needed to do, and that we didn't have these services, so they're, they're placed, or they, they go to FLC, or whichever school they choose, we, we cover that. But now that we have a comprehensive special education preschool, we're meeting the requirement of the state. So if somebody opts to go outside?
Absolutely, so I felt like I was yelling, I'm so sorry. So I just wanted to come to the mic and articulate even further that you're absolutely right. The FLC and the ESC have provided a tremendous service to our families for well over 20 years. I give them tremendous kudos, they have been such a partner in education. They were able to provide a service when Tiffin City and many of the county schools did not have that. But Erin is absolutely correct, we do have a preschool, and we are able to service those children in-house. And I believe, and this is just my old-fashioned Michelle to it, I believe it is our duty, our right, and our privilege to tender and take care of our families. Now, with that means, if those families have an, a choice beside Tiffin City Schools, I will help them get there. If they want to attend whatever school they want for their child, those are babies, and we need to be very encouraging and supportive to our parents that they attend the school that that parent feels comfortable with. to our parents that they attend the school that that parent feels comfortable with. But I encourage you to encourage parents and be supportive that they just follow the open enrollment policy that's been set forth by the Ohio State Department of Education. The other caveat and positive piece that comes with that is I work with Molly Depew, our psychologist. When a parent has a concern, whether they come to us through early intervention or they come to us from outside, Molly, one of my teachers, myself, other related therapies are able to sit down, meet that family, welcome that family, provide an assessment if necessary, and then provide the supports. At this time, we are not afforded that. And Tiffin City Schools is the local educational agencies, agency. And regardless of who we partner or contract with, when things are not done accordingly, Tiffin City Schools, our team, are the ones who must write the corrective action plan, regardless of whether they attend in-house or not. And so I would like to just clean it up, make sure that we are following the policies that Ohio State has set forth, thank those who have been partners with us, and moving forward, help those families get to where they need to be.
I just have a question. On, uh, open enrollment, um, if we, someone open rolls from our district to another district, are, are we responsible for the cost that the other district provides? Or are we responsible for just what our cost would be?
So what would happen is we would be responsible for the goals that are outlined in that IED and the cost attached there too. So if we have a child who is going to be identified for speech, that's a pretty simple cost. Um, the child, we, we have foundation money that comes in, we are then billed back, and then we pay for that child. If we have a child who has more intensive needs or is in need of additional therapy, those costs are incurred, and we are responsible for those as the district of residence. Typically, always, as the resident district, we are invited to those IEDs as we invite the districts. And we have a say at the table, too. We're part of the team, just as the other district is. And we get to learn about that child and what's going to help support them in their educational process. And so as a team, we agree to those services, we agree to the goals in the IED plan, and then we bring that back. And if they are for open enrollment, then we make sure that we pay those costs.
So if a student open enrolls, so right now, they don't have to open enroll. If we require open enrollment, there's no loss of services for the students?
Absolutely not. That IED follows that student no matter where they go.
But the difference is the cost to the district. So right now, without, it's, it's almost like we're operating as if FLC is one of, is a Tiffin City School. And so we pay for the, basically like the entire cost and transportation. But if it were open enrollment, we only pay for the services identified in the IED. My understanding.
So, so I really, I know, I know that you're business people, and I know that sometimes we have to look at that, that cost. But I really don't want to make that, this point right now. I, I really don't respectfully. Because every child is worth every penny that we spend on them. And as a team, we decide that. What I'm saying is this, those are our children. And as you just articulated perfectly, that is not a Tiffin City Schools program. It's been operated as such in the past because we had board members that felt, these are our students, let's pay that upfront. Let's go ahead and pay that upfront. Because there is a cost, and it, there's a lapse of about eighteen months, correct? Sharon, there's a lapse if they open enroll on how we pay that back. So in due diligence, it was, you know what, let's just go into the contract, and let's pay that upfront, because that's a lot of money for someone to have to wait eighteen months for payment. We are at a point right now where we're talking about twenty kiddos. And, and, and like I said before, this is not about, let's shut it down, let's make sure those kids come. No. My recommendation would be, those kiddos that are already enrolled, we simply have that, those families fill out an open enrollment, and we keep them right there, right where they are most comfortable. But moving forward, every single screen, every single meeting through early intervention, through play-based, would come through our psychiatric or our psychologist and our special ed department. Then we, as the LEA, Local Educational Agency, as we are told through the state of Ohio, we then work with that family. It is our right, our privilege, our duty, our honor to be able to help them.
Is that part of this contract?
It is part of the contract. What happens if, uh, this contract today is asking us to enter in a contract for an approximate thirty-six students for the preschool program? Um, what we've been told in the past is that once we agree to this contract, it then enters into the inter-agency agreement, which is part of Seneca County. And, um, unfortunately, we read it differently, unfortunately.
So in the interest of, uh, moving on, is, it, can we change the number? I mean, is that what your, is that what you would recommend? Change the number?
I'm just wondering, like, because we have an open enrollment policy for all other students. Are we able to apply the open enrollment policy here with these students? I, I don't know what the, what the protocol is for the solution. Is it this contract, or is it following our open enrollment policy?
I don't know what the, what the process would be either. What my recommendation would be is to pull this out and table it, and to have a conversation with the ESC to say, moving forward, we would like the students that are going to enroll to go through that open enrollment policy. Um, again, I cannot state strongly enough what a fabulous service they have offered our families and our students for over twenty years. But as we move forward, the state has become very clear that this is coming back on us. We need to be providing the very best services and be aware of what is happening.
It sounds to me like we have open enrollment for everybody above pre-K. So what we're asking, or what you're suggesting is that we have to have open enrollment for all of our kids, not just from one up.
That's right. And in.
Or K up, I'm sorry.
In preschool, open enrollment is only required for students on an IED. It's kind of crazy. But a typical student can go anywhere they want for preschool, anywhere. If they are on an IED, they have to open enroll.
Okay. And that's because if you're not an IED, you're paying for it yourself. So your money follows you in that regard. But I guess, I guess when we did the policy, because I have to, you know, disclose your, my kid went to FLC and got great service. So I'm really concerned about ensuring that we have that choice for people here.
Absolutely.
I think we've been big about that, but, you know.
Here's, here's the beauty of it.
But I think at that point, when we did it, we were trying to reserve to make sure our Tiffin City School kids got in before other kids, because that was the center in the area with how many schools going into it at that point. Seneca East, Hopewell, Mohawk, Old Fort.
Yes, yes.
They've all gone to open enrollment.
We also have parents that want to go to Calvert and do not believe that their service is there. We provide itinerant services. And I'm working with Calvert right now to make sure that we have our people going in and providing those services. Choice is important. Parents should have a choice on where they want to send their children. But while they have that choice, they need to follow the protocol and the processes set up by the state of Ohio. And I'm just asking that we can encourage that and support that for all of our students, pre-K through twelve.
So are we able to, Dr. Zoller or Mrs. Perry, are we able to table this so that that can be, um, addressed so that, because I think all the other pieces are, um, appropriative or didn't stand out. Are we able to go back to the table and address that we follow the open enrollment policy and, and then bring this back? Is that a possibility?
We can try.
But the, the other piece is, and I've brought, sorry, doc, but I brought this up with the previous superintendent. We pay for one, um, social worker in district, and then we contract with the other. Has there been any thought of just having them both in-house? I think we've experimented to the point that we know we're gonna need them in keeping them here where we can use them five days a week versus four, I think is what we have Jill at. I'm not the one budgeting for the long terms.
We have had that discussion. Unfortunately, the, the salary for the ESC social worker is higher than what our salary schedule goes for our in-house.
So I guess I'm still not quite sure that, Michelle, you said the policy already is in place that we do the evaluations, right?
So, to be absolutely transparent, Dr. Gase.
Yeah.
My definition of a contract is very different from, um, the ESC's definition of a contract. And so this contract that you see in front of you, I don't see a line item for psychologist services. And I've asked that. What I see is a contract for preschool services, which means to me that we would do the identification. However, in the inter-agency agreement, it is stated that the LEA will do that. They believe that this contract allows them to do that service for us.
To be the LEA?
To, to be, to step in as the LEA and the district representative.
All right.
And I have asked that we keep that role. And unfortunately, it's been very confused.
Well, it's, well, it was that a year ago. It was had the same, yeah, we've had this conversation before. What's, what's different? Nothing changes that. You, I mean, we had the same conversation a year ago, and did anybody sit down and discuss? Okay, all right.
Because we, I, I think we've had it twice, where we've asked for data and for us to be able to be at the, the table for identification, um, for clarifying some of those line item pieces. But also, I, I, I believe we have a, an open enrollment policy. So it, it seems like we could go back and look at our policy that is in place for our entire district and apply that here. Um, so it seems like that, that's worth, uh, going back to the table and, and re-evaluating this contract so that we are being fiscally sound, seeing as we do now have a, a comprehensive preschool program with the ability to evaluate and identify, which meets the requirement of the laws, correct?
And, and, you know, I know you don't want to hear this, but it is a dollars and cents issue, you know? And, and the point is, is if we can, uh, if we can use the district's money more efficiently, and we, and you just pointed out that they're paying the social worker more money than we do. So obviously, their people are getting paid more than we pay. So we're gonna provide a service that's equal or better at lower cost than we should be, right? I mean, am I wrong?
I think you're right, Dr. Gase.
Okay, that's all, that's all I want to know, is that?
I'm offering you the answer. I think there's a good answer because I, you know, you know I've been doing this for a lot of years.
Right, right. But, but.
I am not, I'm not in any way, not, I don't ever want to come out of my mouth that anything ugly.
Right. We've, we've been through this. That, that ugliness was like five or six years ago. That, that's over. Yeah.
Yes.
But I think.
We need to.
Right. Right. And I think we've, we've, we've been through this with the ESC, you know, we've a lot of, we buried the hatchet years ago with Doc LaHasky, and, and now I think Brenda, you know, is a good relationship with her. So I, I don't see a problem there. I just think that we owe it to our district to use funds to the best we can. And if we're spending more money than we need to for a service that we can provide as good or better, then it's incumbent upon us, you know, as fiscally, uh, good stewards of our money, that we should, we should do that. So I, I, you know, I don't know how this is, is a handshake agreement? Is this, is this contractual thing that we should do? Is it, what, what does it mean?
I think if we always set it with that place that first year, it's just kind of rolled over.
Okay.
Um, to no one's fault. It's just another contract that comes through. And I think that we need to pick it apart and really shop it and say, thank you. Yes, we need this. Yes, we need this. The same as we do with ET services.
Right, exactly. How much, how much time would it take to do that, Michelle?
I'm sorry?
How much time would it take to do that?
I could say he could agree to if you agree to everything else but the prepaid services. And that is easily remedied through an open enrollment form. Parents can still take their children out there.
Okay.
Like, I don't know if we can speak for the contract that they would want to, we probably need to table it, have the whole thing go back, have, you know, our super and our representatives there, our treasurer, sit down and, and share that we're, we need to apply our open enrollment policy across the board. What does that contract now look like? I don't know that we have the, I don't know that we can pick apart a contract that that they've.
Yeah.
Put together.
To be fair, they've probably already, they've probably already done their contracts for their teachers out there. So even if we sat down and we said, there's twenty kids right now there, we will contract for twenty, and then every other child that comes in, we want an open enrollment. I think that, we don't want it to, we, this is not about to cut them off at the leg. This is about doing what's right. So pay for those twenty kids upfront. Okay, we got these twenty, here's the nades, here's the residential piece, la, la, la. Then, I can't do that, I'm so sorry. Then, we move forward, every other child after that comes through us, and if they choose to go to FLC, we will help them fill out their open enrollment. If they want to go to Hopewell, if they want to go to New Bregle, if they want to go wherever, we will help them with that paperwork. I will set up a tour. I will introduce them. I will get them where they need to be.
So are we able, Dr. Zoller, are we able to table this, send it back with administration to then revisit this so that we can apply that, that policy that's already in place ac- across the board, and then y'all can bring it back?
Yes.
And Dr. Zoller, though, do you need the ones approving our staff at the be, the bottom there parsed out? Would you want a motion for, at least for the director of teaching, learning, gifted coordinator, that portion approved tonight? Or would they want the whole thing in total?
I don't know that we can, like Dr. McBride said, I, I don't know that we can.
Okay.
Piecemeal.
Thank you.
Proposal.
Well, and so then, knowing that we also have employees on there as well, and we don't want to harm that, um, if it can, if it needs to be, it could come to a, a special board meeting, which I'm guessing we're going to have to call within a, a week or so. So if y'all can expedite that meeting to get those pieces in place. I don't want to hurt any of the, any of our employees, um, who are contracted in this as well. But I do think that we need to put a plan in place moving forward, especially that, for that, that fiscal responsibility piece.
Absolutely. We can communicate that to the ESC.
Do I have a, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion to table.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Perry?
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. Um, eight point one four is the termination of the OC grievance. This was brought forward, um, at the April twenty-fifth, twenty-two board meeting. Um, for this piece, uh, if a board member is to motion, I need a board member to motion either to grant or deny. The grievance grant would be in support, deny would be does not support. Uh, I will go ahead and make a motion to deny the OC grievance.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry?
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Disdain.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
I'd, um, not an opportunity for public dialogue with the board.
Hello, my name's Erin Simmons, and I live at one seventy-eight Charlotte Street. Um, I have several students here in the district. Um, about two and a half weeks ago, I sent out an email asking for a meeting about some issues with the special education department and services that were being provided. I invited Mr. Bose, Dr. Zoller, and Becky McBride. I invited Molly, our school psych. I also invited, um, Erin Gillig, and I invited Michelle Tuitt, and I also invited, um, Lindsay Rellinger. Lindsay Rellinger and Molly and Erin Gillig showed up to that meeting to discuss those issues. I did not hear from a single board member, none of the administration. I'm at my living room watching the board meeting tonight, and I heard from Dr. Zoller this evening that the three of you were able to meet with a parent that was complaining about a coach being let go. I gave over a week and a half notice that this was an important meeting, there were violations to discuss, and I got no response. So I came to the meeting tonight, and I would like a response tonight is, why is my child's education not as important as a sports event?
I'll, I'll just respond. I believe that initial invitation, the meeting was scheduled and then changed, and then the, the meeting date that it was changed to, I was ill. I was not able to attend that. I was not able to attend that meeting where I would have attended. Your child's educational needs are not less important than the educational needs of any other student in the district, including our athletes. So, I apologize for not being able to make that meeting. I'm certainly able to meet with you in the future, but I was not able to attend that meeting last week.
So, it was Erin Simmons, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't have your question.
Ms. Simmons, you and I have talked on numerous occasions regarding this meeting. I asked a question, said, "Is this a meeting where I'm supposed to be at?" There's lots of meetings where I'm made aware of and try very hard to recognize my role as board member to not overstep, and there's a chain that it typically goes through. I asked if I was needed to attend. It was, my understanding was the first meeting with possibility of escalation, so knowing that I would probably have to attend an escalation piece. So, I made that judgment call based off of recognizing where my role is or isn't. So, I just tried to be mindful of that.
In the email, it was stated that it has escalated beyond the first meeting, because I've been trying for six years to improve the standards and the services of my children and those in the district. I work very hard to help those in the district. And it has gotten to the point where, this is not the first meeting where I have invited administration to please be a part of it, and they haven't been. It's very frustrating to sit there and listen to you say how important and you're fighting for coaches, but when you have a parent that is saying, "Help our children, help our district." I sat at that table with Erin and Lindsay, and I said, "This is nothing personal against you, but this is six years of dealing with this, and it needs to be addressed." Those issues have not been addressed. They've been pushed aside numerous times. I have several parents who are just as upset as I am. They're just not here right now. And I have no problem saying it needs to change. I have asked politely, I have addressed, I have nine pages worth of meetings that I've had within the district, whether it's administrative, whether it's with the aides, or it's with the teachers. I'm trying, and I am not getting a response. I'm getting closed doors from the district here.
So, I want to help. I want to help. I want to understand, so the pieces that are here tonight are pieces that were to be voted on, are pieces that are brought to the board for consideration. So, those pieces, we get to weigh in on.
Extended school year services was one of the issues that was brought up in that meeting, which is the board decision and administration services. You have a summer learning program for your children, which is a Title I program that entitles children to 128 hours of summer school learning. I have four children in IEPs. Three of those children are allowed to attend that summer school program. My child, who has more severe needs, was told he's not allowed to attend that program. He was only entitled to ESY services, which was a total of nine hours. How can you choose between one IEP versus another IEP? They all have needs. Some are more significant, some do require more help, but it doesn't mean you ignore them and say, "They're too difficult, so they don't get the 128 hours." That's discriminatory. You can't do that. But that's what this district is doing. That was what I wanted to discuss, one of many issues, which is part of the board's responsibility.
Certainly.
Erin, can I just talk on behalf of summer extended services?
Amazing program, Jen. You know I love that program.
And I appreciate your kind words, but please understand, when we're talking about extended learning opportunities for our students, the most important thing during that timeframe is to make sure that we're addressing the needs. So, in all fairness, if we're going to do that, I want to make sure that we have the correct staffing in place for that. So, understand that I believe we're working to address that for you, but there may have to be some adjustments for all students. We have some staffing issues. We have 52 students who are currently signed up for our summer program, and in all honesty, I have three full-time teachers. And in all fairness to our teachers and our aides and anyone who wants to staff that, they're tired.
Oh, I agree wholeheartedly.
And so, I will do everything that I can, and so will every other administrator and every other teacher, but understand that there may be changes for all students, and that would encompass your students also.
And I respect that, and that's why I asked for the meeting. And that's why I wanted to discuss, and I sat with Erin, and I sat with Lindsay and Molly, and understand there are staffing issues and there are some guidelines. I understand that. I had this issue last year, the same time last year, and was told, "We'll address it. We'll get to it. Next year will be different." However, here we are this year again, and we're in the exact same boat. There's three days left of school, and I still do not have an answer of what my son's, ESY is going to look like. We have three days left and I still have not received any information, except we're working on it.
And I don't, we're looking, and I don't recall this email. Did you send it to Dr. McBride or?
I did. I sent it to Dr. McBride.
And so, she is appropriate when she said that. So, as a board, I think we're hearing this, and so, I don't think I value you any less than the other students. I know they don't. And so, at this point, what I would ask is, you know, I'm hearing you now, and so I'd ask you for some time for us, because one of our duties is, we don't handle the day-to-day, but we can ask our administrators to explain some of this to us, because we don't know everything, and just, if you give us the opportunity, I'm sure we'll be able to go over with them. And I know you're saying it's been years, and I can't promise you that it'll be like in two hours or anything, but I think if you, you know, again, some of us are hearing for this for the first time. I know you've been living it, but if you give us the opportunity to look into this, that's all I would ask.
And I appreciate that, and I completely understand that. That was my point of coming up here tonight, is I have tried with the administration. I've asked them to show up, and time and time again, they don't. That is my point for bringing it up this evening, so that it is brought to your attention, that I have tried. And you ask any one of the teachers who have worked with me, any one of the aides that have worked with me, I am very passionate about this program in this school district. I only want what's best. But there's not fair and equal treatment here in Tiffin City Schools. And I've followed policies and procedures, and I've done what I'm supposed to do, followed the steps, and I'm asking you to pick it up. I'm tired of forcing the issue. And that was that email of, "I'm taking the next steps, because I've exhausted everything else in this district." So, I would really appreciate it if you would consider it. I would be more than happy to talk to you and tell you in detail my experience, which is not unlike many in this school district. I would be more than happy to fill you in on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Courtney Williams, 43 Frost Parkway. Just a question about high school principal. I have a soon-to-be incoming freshman, so very curious on how the process is going, if the board's aware of, we got anybody applying? Do we have the position out there? Any interviews? What's going on? What does that timeline look like?
Thank you. We roughly have 20 applicants for the position. Some have experience, some do not. And it has been made, it's been made clear with our current superintendent situation search that those individuals would like to be involved in the process, whoever that one person may be. So, as soon as we make that determination, the high school principal search will accelerate beyond what it has been so far.
Okay, so you already have people in the pipeline, ready to go, as far as interviews and second interviews, things like that, once the new superintendent comes on board?
We have not narrowed it down to a certain number of candidates at this point, but as soon as the new superintendent is made, we will be moving forward with the search.
Alright, thank you.
Any other members of the public? So, I think that is a nice segue into our board discussion, and I do want to be very mindful of time, as we've kept you all here very late this evening. The only piece for our board discussion is the superintendent search update. So, at this point, we do have our final interviews tomorrow. We narrowed the candidate pool down to two after the last few rounds and all the community feedback, which we did have an extensive amount of community feedback, and it is, we have two very strong candidates who could both do a phenomenal job. So, tomorrow that we will meet here, and we will meet with both candidates and then deliberate and hope to call a special board meeting in short order to be able to address the contract, trying to find appropriate language. Any other pieces to that? Board members, no? But we did ask, one of the questions we did ask each of the candidates is, we have a high school principalship open, and there is a desire that both candidates shared to be a part of that process if able, but also if our, you know, for whatever reason, our candidate's not here, then we do have to move forward with hiring a principal. So, that is where the administration is on the high school principal, is hoping to do that in combination with the soon-to-be-named superintendent. Any discussion on that? Any other pieces?
I have another piece, doesn't do with the superintendent, but last week I got to serve as a grandparent and as a board rep to Kraut and went on the third grade tour. And I want to tell you, that was a fantastic tour. I told a couple of presenters that I've lived here for 70 years, and I learned things that I had never heard of before. It was fantastic. The kids were very well behaved. It was extremely well organized, and the presenters did a fabulous job. I was quite proud to be a part of Tiffin City Schools, and after hearing all the high school awards, it makes me just grin from ear to ear. There are a lot of good things going on in Tiffin City Schools.
So, to add to that, I live across the street from the Seneca County Museum, and our students represented our school district very well. So, I waited all day for Mr. Kizabeth to walk by my house so I could wave. Probably should have been working. It's a different story, but I would just like to say, every group of students that walked by was very well behaved. Yeah, that was just a very good representation of Tiffin City Schools. I'm very proud of them.
Mr. Kizabeth, it was so great to see it back. I did, I got to do it twice with my two kids, and it's kind of odd, and I got to thank his honor for hosting him again, but we walked in and they're like, "There's Mr. Mayor." Everybody knows who the mayor is. They got to go to the police station to see the soldier and to thank the church for hosting him for lunch, but it's great. And the museum for hosting him as well, and our kids do really well, and it's like, they're part of our community and the community takes them in. But thank you for volunteering to do that as well.
I got a little nervous for my own sake when we went to the Glass Museum.
And thank you to the Glass Museum too, because they all.
I had to be very careful. One last thing I would like to say, our business department and our two JA teams took second and third in the nation. That is unbelievable. We're not talking the state, we're talking the nation. That was unbelievable. I certainly appreciate the work that the kids did and Ms. Geiger did to get them ready. That's a fantastic accomplishment.
Any other pieces from the board? I do not believe that we have executive session. We do have a executive session or special board meeting tomorrow evening, and our next regular board meeting is June 27th at 6:30 PM. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I was going to say, don't all jump at once. Mrs. Perry.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. Thank you all, and have a great night.